Before I will call the work session, the November ninth, 2023 work session to order. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the October 12th, 2023 work session minutes, which are in your packet. I will entertain a motion on those, that matter. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote on those minutes. And the minutes have been adopted. Next item on the agenda is the Chair's report. I have two items to report to you. First, an update on our artificial reefing project with the two train cars going off the coast of Georgia. We have heard from Department of Natural Resources and unfortunately, the barge that they will be using to take the cars out to the location is only available on the week of Thanksgiving. And so unfortunately, those cars will be reefed Thanksgiving week, which I think precludes us from doing an event for the board because I'm sure we'll be doing family activities during that holiday week. But I know that our, our media team, and I believe perhaps WSB will do good coverage of that. And there may, Rhonda or Stephanie can comment on this. There may even be a coverage from a diver that goes down and sees them. So we will certainly be updated and I am hopeful that this will be such a success that the next time we reef some cars, we can go down there and participate. But it is on track for Thanksgiving week. And speaking of Thanksgiving, with Halloween behind us and Thanksgiving imminent, I'm sure you all realize that that is now time to choose our officers for the board next year. So by the power vested in me by the bylaws, I appoint the following individuals to the nominating committee. Ms. Valencia Williamson, Mr. Jacob Zagabe, Ms. Frida Hartage, and Mr. Jim Duritt. So the four of you will serve as our nominating committee to choose our slate of officers to bring before the board in the December meeting. And with that, no, no other items on the Chair report. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Greenwood for the report of the GM and CEO.
Thank you, Chair Worthy. And before I call up our first speaker, I just want to give a quick update on some, some completed audits that MARTA has done recently, our external audits. Firstly, the FDA triennial audit, which is a comprehensive and detailed review of MARTA's operations, administration, and finances. And that's done every three years. And it was, it was at the last one, MARTA had completed in 2019. At that time, MARTA was encouraged by, at the time, our best showing in many audits with only 12 findings. I'm pleased to say that this most recent audit, which came back to us in October, that program financial data was from December 13th, 2019 through October 16th, 2023. And this time, it wasn't 12 findings, it was only three findings. And all of them were minor in nature. And we believe that they will be concluded before the, the report is actually, actually printed. So we're very pleased with that. The other audit that I wanted to just bring to our attention is the GDOT audit. They conducted a triennial security audit of MARTA's Police Department and our security measures. The draft report of findings contained only three deficiencies, all of which were administrative in nature and will be corrected before the end of this month. So we'll provide the board with a full briefing on both of these audits once the final reports are, are released. Next item on the agenda is, is something that we've, we discussed last week and we were talking about our CIP program, our capital expansion program. There were some questions about the, the budget spend. And so what I've asked Chief Capital Officer Carrie Rocha to do is come back and kind of brief the board in its entirety on, on the subject. And, and I'll ask Carrie to indulge me while I try to get this right. And summarizing what we're about to hear is that yes, there are underspends that were obvious in our, in our report at the CNP. And they could largely be, be deemed to be in three different buckets. One is the terms and timing of the financial reporting. Carrie will address that. One is deferred invoicing. And the third is individual project execution. So Carrie's going to speak to us along those lines and, and really set our minds at ease in terms of where we are in terms of our spend. Before she starts, I'll ask Jim Duritt to-
Yeah, colleague, thank you. I, I just didn't want to let you say, hey, we've completed two audits and the findings are really miniscule. I just, I want to say thank you and congratulations to everybody that's part of, of keeping the house in order and, and doing such a good job. I just think that was a really good report you gave and I want to recognize it.
Thank you, Jim. And that, that thanks obviously extends to the MARTA team. It's, it's their good work and follow-up that, and I'm all, I'm also encouraged by the, the reports or the, the feedback that I'm getting from the external auditors when they say they're impressed with the level of collaboration and the, the willingness and quickness with which the MARTA staff are responding to their requests. So it, it kind of helps us reinforce the idea that this is indeed an audit-friendly environment and we, we value those audits and I value the work that the staff has done to get us there. So Carrie, over to you.
Good morning, Chair Worthy, Mr. Greenwood, and esteemed board members. I am here to give you a little deeper dive as requested at the Business Management Committee briefing roughly two weeks ago. Next slide, please. So I'll give you a quick overview of the CIP program of the top 10 projects by planned budget amount as well as expenditure. I'll touch on some of the highlighted projects, just to kind of give you a sense of what is going on in the capital program and then talk through some of the challenges and solutions. Next slide, please. So in terms of the CIP program overview, next slide. As was noted, we do have a deferred expenditure cycle. So what we've done here is put together a chart. The chart that represents the orange bars represents the actual expenditures. So those are checks cut or employees that are paid throughout the months of a fiscal year. And so you'll see that while the blue lines, which is what our Office of Budget and Finance typically presents to you, because they take the chainsaw math, as we call it, of just divide the budget by 12, that's the blue bars. In actuality, the spends, and, and again, this is over the last four years that we've taken this average, typically are very slow in the very beginning of the year. And then they increase towards the end of the year into June, where typically our expenditures reflect roughly 20 to 30% of our budget. And that is because of the accrual process, where if something is done and performed in work, it may not be invoiced until after July 1st, but it still gets charged back against the fiscal year. So that's why you see such a, a bump. In the beginning of a fiscal year, we actually have very few charges that will occur. So you'll see, you know, the average is 6% of the adopted budget. And most invoices, say for a consultant invoice or contractor invoice even, take at least six to eight weeks to go through a process between when a company will close their books, be able to generate an invoice, gather their sub-invoices, quality control that, and then get that over to us. And then we have a 30-day payment cycle that we use here. So something under 30 days. And just a reminder, we are paying roughly 80% of our invoices that we're receiving in less than 30 days. So it's good news once everything is in our OLS system. There are still some bumps in the road with FAR audits and getting those through, but we have come up with ways and I'm going to talk, talk about those here. But the current expenditures for this fiscal year are at 8%. So our average is 6%. Our current, our current expenditure is, is at 8%, which is good news, right? And as we get into September, this is where we really start to ramp up where the charges are, are actually hitting. It's not necessarily what we've earned in terms of work being progressed. Next slide, please. This is just to situate you on where our budgets stand for this year, right? So we have a $456 million budget for our state of good repair. We have a $218 million budget for More Marta, Atlanta, and a $29 million budget for More Marta, Clayton. And again, this is reported, checks cut or people paid against these projects just through the end of September. Next slide. So I'll just review a few of our projects here. Next slide, please. So these are the top 10 projects by expenditure. So the top ones that are reporting expenditures. And it's no surprise to us that some of these are on this particular list. I'll, I'll use the MARTA K-9 program as an example. That's being done as in-house design. So we're not doing that as consultant design. So when in-house design happens, there are employee charges. Those charges are hitting the project and they're generating revenue against this project more immediately than if we had a consultant doing it. So that's why some of these are representing higher percentages than others. Next slide, please. And these are the top 10 budgeted projects for the fiscal year and how these, you know, all, any charges that have hit for this particular fiscal year. So for example, I know we talked about the CPMO at the Business Management Committee meeting, having no billings against it. Well, this is true, right? We, we have no billings against that for July and August. And I do know that we've, we have processed a payment in October. So we'll, we'll be seeing, you know, a July, August payment hitting that in the next quarter. Next slide, please. So we'll go into some of the projects. Next slide. So as we know, Summer Hill, MARTA, the MARTA Rapid System is in construction and we're really excited to have that moving. We did not get to construction as quickly as we anticipated. There was a longer gap between our administrative notice to proceed and site notice to proceed. What we've done is put a number in the bottom corner to reflect more of the actual progress. So we're calling that earned value. So we know that there are invoices that are out there that may be in our system that we're accumulating. We have in-house charges that we know have not necessarily been into some of these reports. So we have added those in here to come up with an earned value calculation to give you a better sense of where the project is. So this project is budgeted for, for this fiscal year to spend $30 million. That's not just contractor costs, it's our FTEs, it's utilities, it's right-of-way acquisition, et cetera. And the expenditures were 1.7 million, but our earned value is 4.6. So that's given us a much better picture. And it fits with the fact that this project did move into construction into, in late September. You know, much progress has happened already. So if you go out there, you can see the roadway torn up and duck banks exposed. We've had some challenges as well. We have to redesign the downtown, several of the blocks in downtown because of the bike lanes that were installed. And we're going to look to flip our BRT lanes onto the other side. And with that, we've had to resequence the job. So we are working with our contractor and trying to minimize any of the claims that are coming at us. We've had some conflicts with watershed and we're, you know, evaluating those utility conflicts at this time. Next slide. With regard to rail station rehab and, and, you know, I'll point out that much of this work is construction. So we're able to burn money quicker and expend money quicker on this program. We've expended, and earned value rather, of 16.5 million. So we've achieved about 33%. Where, you know, we should be right around the 25% mark, but we've had a lot of these cooking for some time in terms of work planning. We've learned a lot in terms of work planning and getting our groups to work together. We're dealing with some track allocation challenges. So how many work zones we can have within a particular line based on single tracking. And so we're, and we're also working through on this more of the CMAR delivery model, right? So as we continue to learn on CMAR, we're going to do better in getting these work orders out. But it's an area that we are particularly focused on. Next slide. Five Points Transformation is a project that is moving along. We anticipated it to be in construction at this time. However, we were informed by FTA that we were noted as a class of action of an environmental assessment, not categorical exclusion, which we had assumed going into the project. The, the station itself has been deemed historic. And so we have been going through the proper process through NEPA for Section 106 for the environmental assessment as well as Section 4F, which is required by USDOT. So we are going through those processes. As you can see, again, slower burn as we go through some planning here, but we hope to get this underway after the first of the year. Next slide. On the Clayton O&amp;M facility, this project is in design. It's actually at 60% design now. So you see a huge jump in the earned value, getting up to, to 54% versus the expenditures to date, which are at 1.5. Again, we've learned a lot about being a landlord in this instance and some of the costs and things that we need to do when we have a condemnation of a property and we take that on and have to move folks out, businesses out. And so again, we're moving very quickly towards the demolition so we can make sure we're containing those costs and maintaining a building that is now vacant. And we're going through some, some exciting stuff with regard to the electric vehicle program. And so how we want to deploy electric vehicle charging at this facility and going through those details as we get through the design. Next slide. On Clayton Southlake, this one's particularly exciting as we sort of took a, a step back to look at making a much more direct connection to the airport as the terminus point, which will help us in our CIG application as well as being able to access more jobs, right? And, and that CIG application for the rating that we have for the project based on the cost and the, and the ridership and access to jobs. So this project is, as we noted, we're progressing on the, on the elements of the project that we know will, are still staying the same. We've gone through the assessment. We're working with our key stakeholders to get the, the final approval to move forward potentially with an alternative LPA. So you should be hearing from us soon. We will actually very shortly be putting out for a final design for this project to keep things moving. Next slide. As we look at the South to Cab Transit Hub, again, you know, talking about particular challenges, sometimes there's some unknowns, especially with what could be in soil. Initial test results force us to do additional testing. And that additional testing may tell us we have to do some sort of mitigation or we could be fine. And in this case, we did that additional testing and we are good to go on moving forward with our preferred site location. So we've completed the 30% plans. But there's been some delay in this, just going through that process. So again, we're, we're moving forward. We're really excited. And this project should be, we've received your approval to go forward with a solicitation for final design. And we should be putting that forward within the next, by the end of this month. Next slide. And now I'll just touch on some of the challenges and solutions, some of the ones that I didn't touch on while we went through the specific projects. Next slide. So we have challenges on all, all fronts. And I'd like to say we're perfect, but we're doing our best to make sure we're refining all of our processes. And we have a good team behind it and, and obviously good leadership in helping us get things decided and move forward. Right now, our quarterly spend, and I'll just touch on a few of these issues. Our quarterly spend does not properly reflect the executed or implemented work. And so we have developed a monthly project expenditure forecast that we may be using in the future to kind of compare where we thought we should be on those expenditures and make it much more realistic. And, and we've been working with the Office of Budget and Finance so that what you see, that chainsaw math again, may not need to be that way when we present the budget. So you have a better sense of where we should be. As noted, we're looking to do an earned value reporting system so that it helps you as well see, you know, where, where we should be on a project, what we've expended in terms of efforts. And that way, it gives us a better sense of, of where our project stands. There are some other realignments that we've done. The Real Estate Group now reports to me under Jacob Vallow, our AGM of Real Estate Development and Asset Management. And this has really led to better coordination on our projects and collaboration earlier, getting real estate involved in our projects earlier so that they can kind of play a role in making some recommendations. Increasing our staffing, we continue to do that. And I think in this environment where it's getting better, staff is becoming more available, both as FTEs and through our JRMT team. Making organizational changes, and, and we've noted those. And I know, you know, several years ago, we, we did make, or two years ago, rather, we made the change to kind of organize by asset category. And then lastly, we recently modified our badging requirements for projects that are not in highly secure areas. So our requirements had been very stringent on all MARTA property. And so for roadway type construction, we do not need the same level of badging for our contractor. And so we're trying to help our contractors out to be able to get labor more easily. Next slide. In terms of program or project specific, we're working on moving our work orders and contract, construction authorizations through the process quicker. Part of this is really getting down to how we do our work plans and getting our contractors to understand the approach and how, what, what the parameters are that they'll be able to work within. But it also goes down to being able to, to execute the work and not having work canceled because of lack of flagging and other, other reasons why we have work that's supposed to happen and it gets canceled. Contractors not starting work relative to long lead items, track allocation, as I noted. So, you know, we can only have a certain number of zones for single tracking. And that's basically because of staffing. And so utilization of third-party flagging will assist us in being able to have more work zones as well as increasing the number of rail controllers that we have in order to make sure we're, we're doing everything appropriate on the backend as well. Monthly billings in a timely fashion. There's a number of challenges that go with those monthly billings. As, as we stated, everyone's in-house needs to be in order. But we also want to make sure that our house is in order. FAR audits had been a particular challenge for some time. We have developed some provisions as a workaround so that a contractor could, or a consultant can use provisional overhead rates so they can get paid and we can go back and true up in, in the end. So again, no one should be working for MARTA and not being able to get paid. We can go back and do the true-ups and we've allowed for that provisional rate. Next slide. Maintaining our encumbrances. So a project has encumbrances when you issue a PO or a work order against it. Sometimes moving between fiscal years on a project that spans multiple years will have particular challenges where encumbrances don't get carried over in appropriate way. And we're really trying to help our teams and especially our financial analysts to, to look for these issues early so that it doesn't come down to when a payment's getting processed and we're, we're not able to move it along. I've already spoken about the track allocation and really increasing staffing there as well as use of third-party flagging. Next slide. And I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Worthy.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Any questions for the board? Ms. Ah.
Yep. I just want to understand the financial reporting. So say work is done in July, you all don't get the bill until September and then you pay it in October. Is that showing as a, you know, an October expense or whatever quarter that is, a Q2 expense? Or is it being pushed back on when the work was actually done?
So in the instance where it is for the current fiscal year, so if it's for FY '24, it's actually recorded when it's paid.
Okay. So it's only when you get June, May, June expenses in July, August, September, that then you're pushing them back to the previous fiscal year that they, that the work was done in. But otherwise, it's, you know, it might be July work being paid in October and it's going to show in October.
That is correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Any other questions, Mr. Duritt?
This is kind of a right-hand, left-hand thing. I, you know, it frustrates me when I read that we had to do some changes to the Summer Hill BRT because the City of Atlanta had put in bike lanes. Is there something that we can do to establish a better communication, working relationship with our jurisdictional partners so that we recognize early on when something is being considered in a transportation corridor so that we don't have to do that sort of thing? And I'm, I'm going to pick on myself as an example as well. I found out that Reelman Road is going to have, is having potholes filled right now and we're about to repave the road. And so that's a right-hand, left-hand thing. And I just wish that, you know, everybody knew what was going on globally so you don't make mistakes like that.
Yeah. So I'll point out, our current administration in the, the Mayor's Office and at ATL DOT has been tremendously great in terms of communicating with us. So I think we have a, a really great working relationship with them that they are informing us of things that are happening and doing that in advance. In this instance, they didn't send us the plans. It was under a prior, you know, administration. And now we're doing what we can to correct it. And I will say, I mean, we're going to have, with the number of projects that we have going on, we're currently going to have bumps in the road to this magnitude, no, because we were really trying to get this work done before the legislative session. But again, it's all about communication. It's all about making sure, you know, we're, we're talking to each other and we do that regularly. So I would say I feel comfortable under the current administration that we have, that we're working with.
Mayor Floyd.
Thank you, Carrie. I think if nothing else, this shows how complex a job you've got of keeping up- I think if nothing else, this shows how complex a job you've got of keeping up with what's going on and planning for it and getting it done and then paying for it is a very complex problem. My question to you is, when should the budget be changed? If you budgeted $15 million to spend on a particular thing over the next fiscal year and you realize three months in, you're not going to get that $15 million, when do you, when should you or do you adjust those numbers for the overall year's outcome?
That's a great question. To me, immediately, right? If we want to spend the money, we need to make sure we're providing it to a project as quickly as we can if we know we're not going to spend it. We have a formal change control process to make those shifts in fiscal year budget allocation. That committee meets, it's a very robust committee, probably at least 20 people are together to make the decisions of, are we okay with moving this? What do the budgets look like? What are the encumbrances? And making sure we're not going to have problems on the backend. But we meet monthly so that we are able to make those decisions on the fly so that we can make the best use of the dollars that we can.
Okay. And what involvement does this board have with that decision at that point in time? My question I'm getting to is that if you're doing something on the Summer Hill and you're obviously not going to spend $50 million there this year that you should have, and you think, well, I may move that to the Clayton County bus thing. Do you have the authority to do that or is that a board decision or?
No. So I'll be real clear. The three buckets of money that we have, the State of Good Repair, the More MARTA Atlanta and the More MARTA Clayton, need to stay within their same program.
Okay, that's a bad example then. I used a bad.
Yep, that's okay.
Say you're moving in two projects and it's in the same bucket.
Yep. So it does not come back to the board. The only time we would have to come back to the board is if we were to exceed our overall authorization top level.
Okay. So we should expect you to expend all the money in that bucket this year, even if you have to move it around? Is that a reasonable expectation?
Well, 100% expenditure is a lot, but yes, you do allocate a budget for expenditures for that fiscal year, yes.
Okay. One of your jobs is we budgeted $100 million out of this bucket, make sure that $100 million gets spent.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, I have to agree. I think Phil was saying that this is a very complex project list that we're doing. And this is really not all of them. We probably have 100 different projects that we're working on. And I tell you, it's quite a bit to try to keep up with. And we really do appreciate the oversight. My question has to do with, at the beginning of this process, say, for instance, when we're talking about the environmental studies that are required. I tend to think that always be, that's kind of one of the areas where we always run into where we're not quite sure what we're going to expect, but we always have to go back and revisit that. When you're doing the planning process when it comes to these sites that we're doing, isn't it just a checklist that we're going to go through and make sure we do these four things no matter what happens in that space?
Yeah, so for federally funded projects, we have to go through the NEPA process. And that NEPA process, until you get to the point where you're doing your checklists and you're providing the special studies that you need associated with that checklist, it's always up to the FTA to make the call on class of action. So for us, it's, you know, the fact that we thought five points would be a categorical exclusion, you look at examples across the country and what we have had here in Georgia, and that was our best guess at that time. They designate, for that particular project, SHPO has designated that as a historic, historically significant, early, less than 50 years old. So none of us could have anticipated that that was going to happen. And now we're much more cautious going into these other projects. But it's a process.
Looking at that for a number of months, and I would hope that we are able to move through this environmental piece a lot sooner so that we can get to actually, you know, 60% design and have this thing begin to show some life in that space. But I do understand it does take time doing these things.
And I believe on that when we have the CE. Yeah, so on that particular project, we do have a categorical exclusion.
Yeah. So despite not meeting the budgeted projections for the spends, specifically to Clayton, would we still be on track? I mean, I think we've got a great understanding of why. We're backed up a little, but are we still going to be on track for completion?
So for the Clayton-Southlake BRT, for example, we are looking at that now. We're working with FTA to go through the NEPA requirements. While that project had been a categorical exclusion before, because we were typically just using area roads, the addition, if we decide to change the LPA of going with the elevated connection to the airport, may impact that. So we're not, it's not definitive, and we're trying to explore that as we look at the different alternatives.
Okay. And so that'll be obviously communicated then to our residents and in those focus groups that you do as well as to our jurisdictional partners.
That is correct. And it is our intention to actually go out to the public with this potential new connection as well.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pond.
Just a clarification to follow up with Ms. Williams's question is, where are we to get from the beginning to the end? And budgeted dollars is one way to look at where you are, but the best way to get there and it's difficult early in the project is, is what is the timeline? It's, how long is it going to take for me to get from the start of planning till the end of construction? And I'll give you an example of why dollars can be misleading sometime, although it's the easiest way and the best way to get there to manage a huge budget is, let's just take a project, it takes a year to do the planning and design, in two years to build the project. You finish the design, you're one-third of the way through, but you probably only spent 20% of the money because the front-end planning and design is a much smaller percentage of the budget than the actual construction. So dollars is one way to look at it. It's a great way for the board to provide oversight, but looking at the end schedule is the best way to say where am I getting from the beginning to the end.
So you're saying that you can't really work in just the dollars.
Correct. And what Kerry tried to show everyone is, is that's when she had those values layers to show you where you were. Is that fair?
Yes.
Mr. Durick.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for putting this together. It's a quality presentation and it's direct response to what we experienced at the committee meeting a few weeks ago. So thank you for responding so quickly and the quality of the information you've shared.
Thank you. Colleagues, my board up here is not working and so sometimes I can't see your light. So if you want to speak and I'm not calling on you, just throw something at me or wave. But thank you, Kerry. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Greenwood for the finishing your report.
Thank you, Chair Worthy, and thank you, Kerry. Next, I'm going to ask our Director of Marketing to come up. Canita, can you chat it with us?
No, I'm going to do it, Colleen.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Melissa's going to fill us in on MARTA Holiday Land.
Good afternoon. I know you guys are shocked, but it's almost the most wonderful time of the year. And it really does start next Tuesday with our MARTA Land Holiday Market at West End. Some of you, at some point in your lives, played Candyland with your kids, I'm sure. That's what you have in front of you. This is our MARTA Land diagram for what, all the great things that are going to be happening around the system, starting next Tuesday and then going through the end of the year. So next Tuesday at West End, from 3:30 until 6:30, we're going to be having a holiday market. The ugly MARTA sweaters and socks will be for sale. Trust me, there's going to be a rush on those. The ones that we did last year that we didn't sell, people were trying to buy them. So this year, we have them for sale at our MARTA Market. We're going to have chefs doing food, cooking and giveaway. Our Fresh MARTA Market will be there so folks can buy groceries that day. We'll be doing pictures with Santa for the kids and any members that need a picture with Santa. And we'll be revealing our holiday bus design. I'll give you a hint, it looks like your sweater. Falalala amazing. So super proud of our marketing team this year and this work. In addition, so after the kickoff next week, we'll have carolers throughout the system. You see the dates here, the performances. And we make sure that we also are not just doing it at rail stations. So we'll be at Southlake at the Bus Bay there. And we're around the station. The holiday bus will be rotating throughout the system. There are three of them. And then those will be free for riders. So if any riders have to take the holiday bus, that's a free ride. And then we'll be also doing surprise giveaways with our MARTA elves who show up on various buses at various times. The last two things I want to point out to, we're super proud of our Art Bound program and how it fits into the holiday work that we do. On November 29th, the cast of the Alliance Theatre's Christmas Carol will ride the train from North Springs to Art Center, caroling along the way, and they will exit at Art Center and head to the Alliance for their performance of Christmas Carol. That starts at 4 o'clock on the 29th. And then on December 14th, at Five Point Station, as part of our customer service, customer appreciation holiday event, Val ethnic will be doing portions of the Urban Nutcracker at Five Point. So we expect a big crowd there and hope to see some of you guys out there. Thank you. Ho, ho, ho.
I see Santa Mullenax has yielded the podium before there's any questions. Mr. Greenwood.
Just a couple of upcoming events, Chair Worthy. Along with the regular committee meetings and board meetings, I'll make note of the MAC Committee Meeting, which is virtual on Tuesday, November 14th, and the Riders Advisory Council, which will be live in the HQ atrium on Wednesday, December 6th. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. At this point in time, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session for the specific purposes of real estate litigation and personnel. Mr. Durick moves. Is there a second? Ms. Blakely seconds. All in favor, this will be a hand vote. Any opposed? Okay, this board is now in executive session. Will all unauthorized personnel... personnel.
I will... (pause) (coughs)
I will. They, Robbie, Robbie Ash's gavel went away and disappeared for good. The time being 1:30, we will now call the November 9, 2023 Board of Directors meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is public comments. Mr. Andrews, do we have any public comments by voicemail or email?
We do, sir, if you give me one second. We have four public comments. One, all of them, I believe, by email. Those, those four public comments, one's from Rose Finch, Matthew Rao, Rose Finch again, and Ruchi Patel. All four of them will be attached to the board minutes verbatim.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Moving on to public comments by citizens in person, in order of which you signed up. First public comment is Mr. Douglas Nagy. Thank you, Mr. Nagy, welcome.
Thank, thank you. Good afternoon. I am Douglas Nagy, an Atlanta resident and MARTA rider. I love MARTA. I took MARTA here. I ride MARTA every day. My professional background is in finance, transportation, corporate strategy, and leadership. Before I returned to the private sector in May, I led transportation capital planning for the city of Atlanta. I wrote a $460 million capital plan that invests in sidewalks, trails, protected bike lanes to provide safe access to MARTA. The Moving Atlanta Forward Plan received unanimous council support and passed at the ballot box by a wide margin. Atlantans want better access to transit. Several MARTA board members asked me to come today to share troubling news about another transportation capital program. I have found severe financial discrepancies within more MARTA. A transit expansion program for Atlanta, paid by Atlanta sales tax and managed by MARTA. Did you know that MARTA's own numbers, own reported numbers, show that more than $50 million has gone missing from more MARTA? For example, in fiscal year 2022, MARTA charged $28.3 million to Atlanta's more MARTA account for expanded bus service, but in that same fiscal year, provided none on net. These are not my numbers. These are the numbers that the CEO of MARTA has presented to Atlanta City Council and to the mayor. These are directly MARTA's numbers. So the question is, if the money didn't go to expanded bus service, where did it go? The more MARTA audit is badly needed. Unfortunately, MARTA CEO Colley Greenwood has attacked the more MARTA audit and has actively seeked to limit its scope. Why? Why would your CEO attack basic financial transparency? For those of us that love MARTA and that depend on MARTA, our first reaction to the financial mess is disbelief. But the ugly facts and the absence of satisfactory answers build resolve to find the truth and to make things right. Thank you.
It's, it's usually not commonplace to respond to public comment, but I find it very troubling, some of the things that were just stated. And I remind our colleagues that we, in fact, have a nationally known accounting firm, Malden and Jenkins, that our, our partners at the city of Atlanta are paying a lot of money to look into this. And I am confident that if it uncovers something, it will be rectified. And I'm confident that if nothing is uncovered, maybe we'll hear from Mr. Nagy and the supporter newsletter again. Moving on, next public comment. Forgive me if I get this name wrong, Chioki Perry? I got it way wrong, didn't I?
Good afternoon. It's just the interesting way of pronouncing it, I suppose, so no.
Forgive me, I apologize.
We're never, we're never wrong. We're here at Lindbergh. I am Chioki Perry. Lifelong public transit rider here in, in Atlanta. And I'm simply here to ask you guys to take a look at our route number 196 that leaves the College Park Station and ends at South Lake Mall. Very simply, I ask that because we need a relief situation on that particular route. I really don't like to do things one route at a time and taking a more systematic approach. But what I actually hope for is maybe some type of express system to cover the back end of route number 196. Because it seems like one hiccup, and we've got the largest buses in the fleet, creates a huge wave that impacts a lot of folk, especially in the evenings, like we encountered on Tuesday evening, trying to get home to get started for your next day. And why is a major concern for me? Well, that's the route that actually goes past my parents' house in their mid to late 70s. And I, I sort of need that route and for it to be efficient and to operate where I could sort of gauge how I can get to my parents and find a way to keep them off the streets of Atlanta, because they each still want to drive, which is really interesting for me, because I love public transportation and great bus ride and bus connection. So if anybody's been around as, as long as I have, you could probably remember an old bus route number 77, Hapeville. But once that bus exited 285 and went south on Jonesboro Road way back when, we'd encounter a zone fare after coming to the Clayton County line. Well, that's no longer a situation, because Clayton County is a full partner. So just partner with us and help create relief. And I've already named the bus route. It's route number 199. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Next public commenter is Patty Durand.
Good afternoon, MARTA board members. I'm a public transit lover, too. So hello, I'm here to talk about the huge public support that remains strong for Beltline Rail. As you know, the more MARTA sales tax referendum passed in 2016 with over 70% approval, unheard of numbers for any referendum before or since. That is because of strong public support for Beltline Rail, which was the priority project that the more MARTA presentation and roadshow emphasized, and that's what citizens responded to. That was in 2016, but what about now? Broad support for Beltline Rail remains strong among the public. NPUs and neighborhood associations, which represent more than two-thirds of the city's population, signed updated endorsement letters this year in the majority of the NPUs along the corridor. The one NPU that did not sign wants more information on the anticipated route. Their concerns are explained in a report that Beltline Rail Now published two weeks ago and is widely distributed. All of you should have a copy. Speaking of concerns, there is concern about why it is taking so long for MARTA to sign the contract with HDR. Please negotiate in good faith, and after all this time waiting, please move that along. We want them to begin. The delays allow people to paint negative images, because they are not getting any positive images from you or from HDR or from anyone. For example, a friend of mine thought the train was going to be on the trail and people were going to have to dodge it. She didn't understand the vision that the train does not ride on the trail. Other people think that autonomous shuttles or scooters could work, because they don't understand the Atlanta Regional Commission has estimated 31,000 riders on Beltline Rail by 2050. They think it's just going to be a few people, because no one is out there telling them anything. Please continue with the grass railbed idea. Please make the fencing, the separators attractive. Please fix the streetcar problems, so that there is a dedicated rail, so that paint is fixed, and that parked cars are moved, so that they don't block the train, the, the streetcar. Please fix the, the actual streetcar itself, so that it's more attractive and appropriate sized for its use. That is a behemoth, and it's far too big and enclosed and just doesn't speak to Atlanta's culture and weather. And so I especially want to ask that the board members, thank you for voting to proceed. Thank you for voting to begin discussions with HDR. Please continue that and move it along. And we look forward to and hope for very strong public engagement and public interaction as the process continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durand. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the October 12, 2023 Board of Directors minutes. I will entertain a motion for approval of those minutes. It's been moved by Ms. Williamson and seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The minutes have been adopted. We will, next item on the agenda are the committee reports. We will begin with the Business Management Committee. Chairman Durratt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Business Management Committee met on Thursday, October 26, 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of an enterprise customer relationship management system, RFP P50420. And B, a resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of MARTA's employee assistance program services, RFP P50406. I request approval of these resolutions.
Chairman Durratt has moved for approval, and it has now been seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The resolutions have been adopted.
The committee also received the following briefing. Fiscal year 2023 September financial highlights and financial performance indicators. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Durratt. Next up, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee. Chairwoman Blakely.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, October 26, 2023, and approved the following resolution. A, resolution authorizing solicitation of proposals for design build services for safe routes to transit. I request approval of this resolution. Mr. Chairman, this report, this concludes.
Chairwoman Blakely moves for approval of those resolutions, and it has been seconded by Mr. Durratt. Any discussion? Please vote. The resolution has been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairwoman Blakely. Operations and Safety Committee, Chairman Pond.
Mr. Chairman, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, October 26, 2023, and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for MARTA lift partnership, letter of agreement, LOAL 48275. B, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for authority-wide uniforms for MARTA's workforce, IFBB 50238B. Resolution C, authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of mobility for transit services, RFP P50407. And D, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for non-revenue vehicle parts, RFP P50309 utilized in the federal GSA program. I request approval of these resolutions.
Chairman Pond has moved for approval of the resolutions, and it's been seconded. Any discussion? Please vote. The resolutions have been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman Pond. Are there any other matters that come before the Board of Directors?
Yes, sir, we have two matters as a result of our conversations in executive session. The first matter is a, we would need a motion to approve a settlement in the lawsuit of Terrell Superville versus MARTA and Whitney Hadley in the amount of $275,000.
Mr. Durratt moves. Is there a second? Mr. Pond is the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The settlement is approved unanimously.
Thank you. The second matter is a, we would need a motion to approve a settlement in the lawsuit of Dwight Watt, $180,000.
Mr. Durratt moves. Ms. Powers seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Andrews, the settlement is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Final item on the agenda, are there any comments from my colleagues on the board?
Yes, one quick comment. I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Durratt on his CID recognition award. I believe the ceremony is next Tuesday?
I think you're supposed to be there, Mr. Durratt, so I'd find out when it is.
Yes, so just wanted to say how proud we are of you and recognize you for your contributions. Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Blakely. Any other comments from the board? If they, if we did have a vote on it, we're not sure he'd be recognized. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, this meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.